Okay, I'll say it backwards to test. Okay, it's seven o'clock. Pearl City New Report in order. Welcome, everyone on this. I know everybody's. Meetings that we've had. A little cool. Nice having that trade win. But we should have a fairly short meeting tonight. There's a few people that couldn't make it tonight. But it's going to be important because we do have some of our officials here that have some great things to say. Starting off our time limit policy and procedures, anyone wishing to speak is asked to open up the list of participants and click and raise their hand on the virtual side by their name. When recognized by the chair, address comments to the chair. Remarks should not exceed three minutes. Please cancel the raise hand icon after speaking. Presentations must be kept under 10 minutes. The chat box can also be used to ask simple questions. Board members are required to keep video active during board meeting. And the board may take action on any agenda item as required by the State Sunshine Law. Specific issues not noted on agenda cannot be voted on unless added to the agenda. Board actions such as draft resolutions and outgoing letters are posted for our public on our Google Drive. Okay. Did everybody get a chance to sign in so we could make sure that our official meeting is recorded properly? And I'll start off with a roll call of our board members. Kay Kuni Agard.
Here.
Rodney A Wong.
Here.
Charmaine Doran, my vice chair.
Here.
Okay, Guy Anoy.
Here.
Brendan Lee. Still waiting for Brendan. Okay, Junior Miazano.
Here.
Dan Smith.
Here.
Nate Taguchi.
Here.
Okay, and myself, Larry Verre. We have, we have, we do have Quorum and Dion Mesta and Tony Valesco could not make it tonight. Okay, starting right off, our, our public safety reports, starting off with the Honolulu Fire Department with our Wai'au Station. Please take the mic.
Evening, folks. How we doing? Good. My name's Kirk. I'm with the Wai'au Station down over by the park and just wanted to present you folks with the statistics for this past March. So as far as fires go, we had only one structured fire in your area. There were no wildland brush fires. Moisture's been good. Not dealing with that right now. Nuisance fires, which is kind of rubbish fires. Sometimes we go to homeless people setting those things. That's, we've had three of those nuisance fires. We've had zero cooking fires, so that's good. Unattended cooking is one of the highest reasons for structured fires, so to have a zero is good. Activated alarms, that is an alarm without a fire, we've had two. And then as far as the emergencies go, predominantly medical emergencies, we've had 145 medical emergencies in the area for the month of March. There were zero motor vehicle collisions with pedestrians. There were eight motor vehicle crashes or collisions. The majority of those are going to be on the H. We had zero mountain rescues, zero ocean rescues. Surprise, surprise. Hazardous material incidents, zero as well. So a fire safety tip and announcements that we've got for this month, we wanted you guys to think about evacuation planning. And obviously, the highness been on everybody's mind. Watch what's gone on there. I'm not sure if you folks have had a chance to take a look at our website, the Honolulu.gov, the fire site. But we've got a guide on that website and I've got a bunch of paper copies here as well that you can distribute. You can take a look at. It's the exact same one that's online. So what I just wanted to kind of pass along to you folks is to make sure that you have an emergency evacuation and preparedness plan, ready in case of an environmental emergency, fire or natural disaster. You want to know two ways out of your home, specifically your room. Might be your primary door coming in and out of your bedroom. Maybe your window would be your secondary egress. But have two ways out of, out of your home and out of each room. And then consider the route that you're going to take if you need to evacuate from your neighborhood itself. And I've got the website on here. It's fire.honolulu.gov to learn more. Like I said, this fire safety guide is on there. It talks about wildland urban interface, what things you can do as homeowners to protect yourselves, gives yourself a better chance of keeping that fire from propagating on your property. The other tips that we've got here is make sure that you leave early enough to avoid being caught in a fire smoke or road congestion. We all understand what it's like to try and protect something that you've worked super hard for. Do you want to look after it, protect it? But maybe the best thing is to get out of there and let us do that job. Sometimes if you stay too long, it makes our job that much more difficult because instead of just fighting a fire, we've got to evacuate people as well. And we've got to put ourselves in harm's way to make that happen. So consider getting out of there in a timely manner. Make sure you know how you're going to get out of there. Establish a predetermined location such as a well-prepared neighbor or relative's house in a low-risk area or a shelter and evacuation center. Know where you're going to go. Make sure you have the things that you're going to need in those places. So make an emergency supply kit. Make sure you bring that with you, kind of a jump bag. And if you've got pets, medication, make sure you've got food for your pets. Make sure you've got medications for yourselves as well. You don't know how long the situation is going to last, so recommend and plan for two weeks, just, just in case, same as the hurricanes. So that's the tips that we've got there. Going to leave you with a copy of just the statistics here. Exactly what I went over, and then I've got 10 hard copies of the booklet. And again, that fire.honolulu.gov, if you go on there, this guide is on there. Everyone can download it. And there's a lot more great information, videos and whatnot that we've taken the time to prepare. The fire departments in Hawaii, so you know, if it's important to you, and it should be, do take a look at that, please.
Okay, thank you very much. We really appreciate the advice and the tips. I'm president, my homeowners association in Wai'au. And normally what I'll do is I put that in my newsletters to go out to my residents. Eventually, my goal is to try to get a lot of town hall associations to get those email addresses for the presidents of each one so I can give you wider dissemination of that website.
Go Larry.
Do it. Okay. Board members, any questions for fire? Okay, community, any questions? Okay, gentlemen, thank you so much for what you do for us. Stay safe and we'll see you next month. And then that, that will be, uh, what you gave your notes so you can put in the minutes. Okay, Honolulu Fire Department, are you online? I mean, Police Department.
Yeah, good, good evening, board members. Can everybody hear me okay?
We got you five by five.
Okay, so I'm going to present the stats for March 2024 and compare them to February of 2024, the previous month. So for motor vehicle thefts in March, we had seven reported incidents as compared to three in February. Two burglary incidents reported as compared to two in February. Thirty individual cases of theft reported as compared to 32 in February. And 10 cases of unauthorized entry into motor vehicle as compared to seven in February. And for the month of March, we responded.
Somebody's got a hot mic. I think the Chinese just hacked into us.
Oh, no. Um, and then, uh, for the month of March, responded to 5,824 total calls for service as compared to 5,274 calls for service in February. And, um, that's the stats I have unless anybody has any questions.
Okay, board members, any questions for HPD? Community, any questions? Yep. Okay, and other nets are, I think that's, we don't have any questions right now. Thank you for your report.
Okay, thank you very much. Have a good evening.
And have you guys changed majors yet at District Three?
Uh, Sunday, so Major Rand, Major Randall Platt will be taking over District Three effective this coming Sunday.
Okay, great, because we have the Pearl City Community Association who'll be supporting Police Week that's coming up.
Oh, terrific. And our captain, our captain remains, she's staying on, Captain Denise Nakabayashi. She'll be staying on as a captain as well.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on. Moving on to public testimony, you have three minutes. Anybody like to come up to the mic and talk? I think we have the two of you for, for homeless coordinators. And you can say what group you're from. And welcome.
Hello, guys. Okay. Um, hello Chair and Board Members. Our name is Litiu Uini Kuahu and this is Kahial Kalava. We are straight outreach worker for Kealaho West Oahu. In December 2024, Keala West Oahu was awarded, awarded the outreach contract under the Homeless Programs Office through the state of Hawaii. We are one of many nonprofit agencies that provide services to our unsheltered Anoahu. With focus on placing families and individuals experiencing homelessness into, into permanent housing as quickly as possible, then delivering services to promote housing stability and client well-being. Our goal is to reduce by relocating participants who are experiencing crisis or an imminent risk from losing current housing. And then to continue services to overcome barriers and achieve housing stability. We provide a spectrum of services such as assistance with completing SSA, DHS medical benefits, preparations for job opportunity, coordinating with the DOE, homeless reps, transportation services to obtaining documents and complying with medical appointments, housing referral, food pantry, et cetera. Our office is located at Barbers Point Building 50A, Kapole High, 96707. And on Tuesdays, we utilize space at the House of Blessings located in Waihewa. Please keep in mind that we are straight outreach workers and are accessible mobile for the population we serve. You can reach us on our outreach mobile line at 808-745-6053 for any questions or assistance. Since December 2024, Kealaho West Oahu has enrolled a total of 72 unsheltered individuals. Of the 72 unsheltered individuals, the outreach team was able to house a total of 15 unsheltered individuals. That consists of six households. Of the six households, KWO places four households that consist of 12 unsheltered individuals into the emergency shelter program. One single unsheltered into the transitional shelter program and one household that consists of two unsheltered individuals into DV shelter. We also engage in enforcement by providing the unsheltered with services and housing opportunities, community cleanup, walk the blocks and community service fairs, et cetera. Please keep in mind that there are more outreach programs in each district aiming to provide a spectrum of services based on the funders, the contract requirements and locations. For example, we have an outreach team that focuses on youth only and will refer and connect the homeless persons to the program assigned to the appropriate region. Or other outreach programs that provide health services or mental health services with the respect of connecting homeless individuals to the appropriate program that may best suit the homeless individual. Thank you for your time.
Okay, great. And we really appreciate what you do. It's very difficult sometimes trying to engage the homeless and especially trying to convince them that there is, there is a good future for them if they go with your route. I, I've tried to recruit for the Hono group over, over at Blaisdell. And of course, it's so tough. People just don't want to follow rules and they just like the streets. So board members, any questions? Go, go ahead.
I'll try to answer as best I can.
I got my, our vice chair, she had her hands up first. Charmaine, sorry, almost missed you.
I'm welcome and thank you for coming. And we can maybe connect offline. I've left, I've called you guys several times over the last two weeks at the direction of Hono. I have a few individuals who I guess need some assistance or some connection from me. So maybe we could connect offline, maybe sometime later in the week.
Yes, that's fine.
Okay, who's next? We got down there.
I'll go ahead. I'm Dan Smith. Um. Do you have a Calhali in your, in your area? You know, like the one that was set up downtown.
Like Hono? No.
The one by the airport. Coming. Nimmex and you're going it's on the right side before you actually get it.
Like those housings under, like by Nimmex. Um, so we do have an emergency shelter where our office is at. It's called Ole, Olela and Ole Ula. Yeah.
Yeah, well, where I'm going is I think that, um, and maybe I'm wrong, you get your, get some commentary on it, but if you had small prefab houses that you could place down wherever you have a sewer and water connection, that you could, you know, move people off the street, that they would, do you think your, your customers would, would accept that?
Some of them do, but not all because the ones that we try to help get off the sheets, their, their living situation, they'd rather be there. I mean, we try, we continually go to the same people and try to see if they need help. Some do take our offer that's been there for a long time, but some don't because they rather live the way they're living right now. But yeah.
Um, do you have like a business card or something?
We don't, sorry, we forgot it. The next time we come, we'll bring promises. And we'll bring our brochure as well.
So what is you guys' spectrum? Is it the whole island or just the Wai'au?
Um, we are Region Three and Five. So we have Waihewa, Haleiwa, Pearl City, Waipahu, Kapole and Eba Beach.
Okay, good. Appreciate it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So your community partners, I mean, you said that you had won the grant for the work for this, I guess, window. But on the west side and in Waihewa, who are some of the groups you mentioned, like the church is a place that you guys have some of your activity, but are you working with other nonprofits on the west side and in Waihewa?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. Thanks, guys. Before you leave though.
We got it.
I, I give my information to Larry. Thank you, guys.
Yeah, so before you leave, hold on a second because we're still going to ask the community, but board members, I have their contact information. I will share that with all of you. Because what I ask, especially, I know that, that our vice chair Charmaine has got homeless up there in Pacific Palisades. And she is trying to make recommendations for them. But all of us need to engage when we can to help out. And also at this point, we did get an invite from the Hono group, so I need to find out from you guys when you're available. We can go as a, as a board down to Richard, down to Blaisdell Park, and they want to show us the program that they have going on. And I'd like to also work with you guys if there's an opportunity to visit Barbers Point down the road. But thank you so much, community. Community, any questions? No questions. Hey, you guys look good in your shirts, too. Okay, any other, uh, public concerns? All right, seeing none. We're going to move on to our officials. We're going to start off with Mr. Jeff Hickman, representing Governor Josh Green's office. And welcome, Mr. Hickman.
Hello, Chair, Board, and the public. Thank you, especially those online making time to attend. I kind of want to echo what the Honolulu Fire Department said about being prepared. Now, we're just finishing up tsunami awareness month and we're coming up on hurricane preparedness month. And Hawaii hasn't been hit really hard in a while. Lane was the last one and it kind of damaged, did the damage on Big Island, but that was it. Uh, we haven't had a big one in a while, so we're really telling people to prepare. And that goes with fire plans as well as, you know, having the 14 days with the food, having the plan to connect with your family in case you have to evacuate your home. Places that you'd go and how you'd communicate. These all should be done ahead of time. Uh, I'll share with Larry, I'll send you the, the link to the hurricane preparedness site. It's on the Hawaii Emergency Management website. And it has really good tips on there. And that's one of the things the governor wanted to share tonight. Other than that, I'm open for questions from the board or from the public.
Okay, Jeff, thank you for bringing up a very important subject. One of the things that keeps me up at night is all the wooden structures and telephone poles that are exposed in Pearl City. I don't think we could survive a cat two and above hurricane. Uh, Dr. Kiony Dudley from the Makakilo Neighborhood Board engaged the mayor at their town hall meeting here a few weeks back. And one of the things he brought up is 187,000 wooden structures that we live in. Just can't, can't take anything more than a cat two. And then the other thing is we have, we lack the emergency shelters because the shelters just aren't equipped to handle that many people. So I've taken on board with my homeowners association, we are planning to butt down. We're going to stay in place. We're going to go from an association to a village and we're going to take care of each other. And we're putting plans together for everybody to have tents ready to go. You may live in your house, but you'll live in your tents. But the act, the action list that you got, I circulated to all the residents where we live. I need to make sure that everybody in Pearl City takes this very serious. We're no La Niña, but the problem is the hurricane spawning ground has moved north 100 miles. Now, as they move wester, it's directly right in line with the Big Island and all of us. So we don't know what to expect this year. And of course, words from the mayor, hope and pray it doesn't happen. So, thank you. Board members, anything?
Larry, on, on that case, one thing we want different amount of the public to know is that there's not a lot of shelters that are set up ahead of time. We're telling people to shelter in place or go to a safer place if you don't feel safe at home. So yeah, there are no shelters like they used to be in the 60s and 70s. It's shelter in place. And then some of the schools open up for hard-hit areas, but other than that, it is, you got to make the plan ahead of time.
Board members, any questions? Virtual, anybody? Okay, community, any questions for Mr. Hickman? All right, seeing none. Thank you very much. Thank you for the best of the governor. Okay, moving on to our state legislators and who were up very late last night as I saw on, on, on KHON. Senator Glenn Wakai, is anybody there from his office? I don't think he's making it tonight. Okay, and we do have Senator Elafante here. Welcome, sir.
Sorry, Senator, one second. Mr. Chair, is the DOT not here?
Oh, I'm sorry, DOT is not here. I scratched him off the list. Hey, guys, so the floor is yours. And of course, what I, my vice chair and I, what we set up for this month, as you notice, we don't have any board actions. We wanted to give the officials a little bit more time to talk if they've got some things they want to talk about and especially how, how much we appreciate all of you for what you've done this past year for us through all these tough times that we've had. You guys have been there for us. So it's over to you.
Thank you, Sheriff Ray, Vice Chair Duran, members of the Pearl City Board and community. We're very grateful to be here. Out of the legislators that are here, we've been working some hard and long nights. I'm happy to report, Rep Takayama and I, we sit on the judiciary committees. And we reported out a judiciary budget both to the full House and Senate this evening. So thank you for this time. A few updates. You have my written report. Thank you, Chair Verre, as well as Vice Chair Duran, Board Member Smith, Board Member Lee, and to the many others on this board and the community for submitting testimony on various measures and participating in person throughout the session. First off, I want to talk about, you know, Palisades, some Palisades resol. We're making significant progress. Both Rep Takayama and I have been meeting specifically with the Director of Transportation, Director Sniffin, to look at the emergency access route into Palisades as a priority. They are working on that and hope to get us a report back. And when we do get that report back from HDOT, we'll be happy to report to the board and the community for that. Along with the siren, the siren, as you know, we had several bills, the bills didn't get quite far. But we did get a resolution adopted to make it a top priority in working with Ha'ima to replace that siren up in Palisades. And our understanding is that it is Ha'ima's priority to put it into their system so that we can get that siren repaired. So again, thank you for your efforts on that. Speeding bills, there are several speeding bills still in conference, one dealing with speeding in school zones. And many of you probably heard in the news that are speed cameras. So that's still in conference, working out, ironing out the details. And we'll see what comes up in the next week and a half when we end session. And then finally, I know Rep Chan and I have been working hard on this measure that has also been in the news and he can share more about it. What has to do with Senate Bill 2305, I think, 2305 is our silver alert, which for those 65 years and older, will put on an alert for those that go missing. So that is still in conference. I'll defer to him to share more updates on that. But again, we're in the final days, final stretch of session. And we hope to have a full-on report for you and the board once session ends and whatnot. But we're very grateful for the support from the ProCity community and for taking the time to write testimony for various issues. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Board members, any questions for our senator? Charmaine?
Um, it's not really a question. I just want to say thank you very much for all the multiple different versions for the siren and the speeding and all and the emergency route. Thank you for your vote on Alapaki and Halea. That meant a lot to me and many people in my family. And thank you for always being here. And this is also for Representative Takayama. Too, it is nice to say when I hear people expressing concerns that, you know, you can just show up once a month and they're always here and they're always available to talk to everybody one-on-one. And that means a lot. So thank you for being here pretty regularly. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, board members, seeing none. Community, seeing none. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to Senator Kino, he emailed me. He could not be here tonight. I don't know if his, his assistant is here. Seeing none. Moving on to Representative Greg Takayama. Welcome, sir.
Thank you. I just want to follow up with what Vice Chair mentioned. We're fortunate to be members of a legislative team that works very well together. Senator Elafante mentioned us working with Representative Chen as well. And that's not true. Believe me, of very many other districts in, in the community. So I feel fortunate to be working with them. And speaking of our community, the Senate a few days ago confirmed former Representative Roy Takumi to be chairman of the Board of Education. And so I think this is one of the few times in history where one community is home to both the chairman of the Board of Education and the superintendent of education, Kit Hayashi, who lives just a few blocks away from here. So ProCity can be very proud of that fact. And we know who to take all our complaints about schools to now. Anyway, um, just wanted to thank the members of the outreach team. Just before I forget that I met with them a few days ago and brought to their attention, there's a homeless individual living under the pedestrian overpass near Peaches. And there's a tent there. You folks have probably seen it, but so they're working on that case. So, and hopefully they'll meet with some success. Couple bills I wanted to mention, fireworks. I know that's been a, a big topic of concern. You know, there's a fireworks task force that was created a year ago and they've produced results. I think there's been a reduction in, in the off, off-holiday fireworks, except for the Max Holloway fight. I think everybody spent their last fireworks that evening, hopefully, but we'll see. The budget includes about $1.2 million to continue the work of the task force. So that's a tribute to members of the Budget Committee. There's also a separate bill to give additional powers to the fireworks task force. That is to do inspections of those people who have licenses to distribute fireworks. Because the intelligence they got is that some of these dealers are, are not on the up and up. And, and so without going into detail, you know, they need this authority to really crack down on the black market in fireworks. They tell me right now that their seizures and they've seized, you know, almost 200,000 pounds of illegal fireworks so far have really driven up the, the price of illegal fire aerials. And so in that sense, they've been successful. The last thing I wanted to mention was the Sunset Memorial Cemetery Bill, which, and, and just to follow up what Senator Elafante said. We're in the last 10 days of the session, which means this is when we spend the next few days resolving differences between what the House passed and what the Senate passed in, in every bill. And in this case, the Sunset Memorial Cemetery Bill has a few differences. I think we'll resolve them. We meet on Friday afternoon and, and then hopefully we'll come up with a finished product that we can send to the governor. So with that, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Well, thank you so much, Representative Takayama. I know you put a lot of time in, especially helping us try to find the solutions for our abandoned cemetery. But fireworks and the ingress, egress route, sirens, everything, you've all worked closely together. We can come up with solutions for those. So board members, any, anything?
I'm sorry, I, I forgot to mention one thing about the sirens, just to add to what Senator Elafante said. A couple of weeks ago, my office sent out a postcard survey. A couple of weeks ago, my office sent out a postcard survey to everyone who lives in Palisades. And some of you may have gotten it. And we got to ask them about whether they actually can hear the siren or not. Because the closest siren is here at Pro City High School. And so we got 150 responses and 100 said, no problem, they can hear it. 50 people said they, the siren, they either couldn't hear or was very faint. We didn't go into whether they can hear anything else, but we know that, you know, there is at least, seems to be a problem that we need to work on.
Yeah, those 50 are the ones that have boom boxes in their trucks. They can't hear. Over to you.
So with that being said, maybe on the next siren that they do install, could it be, the speaker be rotated?
I'm sorry, the speaker?
The speaker on the siren, can it be rotated?
Oh, you mean like rotational type?
Exactly.
I don't know, I'll check with Ha'ima. That's a good question because, you know, that is the more modern, you know, rotating kind. But I can, we can certainly find out.
Yeah, to follow up, the siren that's there that doesn't work is at
Palisades Elementary.
Palisades Elementary. And there was another bill to install or replace it, move it higher up, which I think should be considered because Palisades Elementary is a little bit down in, down in the valley. I just, but first thing, make that thing at Palisades work. It shouldn't be, shouldn't be that hard, but.
Yeah, that's the thing, because the infrastructure, the wiring is there. What's not working is the actual machinery itself. So, you know, I think it'd be quicker for them to put in the new one right there. And if they work in a rotational type mechanism, then, you know, even better.
Okay, our Vice Chair, Charmaine?
Thank you for working on the emergency route and the siren. And, you know, sometimes I can hear the siren, but this last time I couldn't. So I think it depends what's going on too, whether it's really loud. So sometimes I can hear it. I thought it was working.
Yeah, so, so one thing I will do is, we're at this point here, you know, we've gone through the legislature. There is a way ahead, but we don't want that way ahead to be next year to replace it. We have got to expedite that. And the other thing I was hoping for, you know, the state has been using legacy technology for our sirens. We need to get even with the Navy with what they've introduced because they can actually do voice commands and let everybody know there's an active shooter on the grounds. So we need that technology and also be able to go in multiple languages, you know, to try to help out. But anyway, it's just a thought and we'll, I'll probably put a committee together to follow up on that. But any other questions, board members, for our representative? Seeing none, virtual, community? Any questions? None, thank you so much. Okay, moving on to Representative Cory Chun. Cory?
Thank you, Chair, board members. So the judiciary budget was passed. Also, we passed the state budget as well tonight. I was actually, we just passed it a few hours ago. So I have some other things to share. Yeah. 1800 passed. So I just wanted to share some of the priorities that I've been working on this session. As you know, I mentioned before, Rep. Takayama, who is the, one of the co-conveners of the Legislative Kapuna Caucus, had me come aboard and help him out with kapuna issues because that's really important with our aging population. And so I still have three bills that are still alive this session, knock on wood. Now that we finished the budget, hopefully they can get funded. The first one is House Bill 1772, which is relating to fall prevention. So as you know, you know, when we get older and sometimes falls happen. And when you do fall, especially when you're a kapuna, your chances of being severely hurt, you know, just increases. So what we're trying to do is just fund a program that's already in existence with the Department of Health, just to make sure that the information about fall prevention is still out there and it's top of mind. The second one was, one of the priorities was House Bill 1974, which is related to social services. So this is something that increases a personal needs allowance. So if you're on Medicare and you live in a care home, you're only given $50 for your personal needs. And that's been the case since 2007, when the state raised it from $30 to $50. As you can imagine, the cost of goods has gone up. And so, you know, surviving off of $50 is just not adequate. So we increased it on $25 this year. So now it's 50 to 75. And it took us almost 16 years to do that. So hopefully the next time, you know, it's needed, we won't take that long and we can help our folks out in need. Uh, the last bill is House Bill 2224, which is really something that I've been working on with the Kapuna Caucus, trying to address our long-term care issues. So as you know, long-term care is becoming very costly. And when we've kind of looked at our long-term care system in Hawaii, one of the things that you kind of notice is that we spend a lot of money on it, but our outcomes aren't getting any better. So what we're trying to do with this bill is to actually come up with a state long-term care master plan to try to address those issues because I don't think just throwing more money at it will change the outcomes. And so it's one of these long-term projects, but it's something we really need to do. Because as you know, long-term care is just such a big need and it's just going to grow. And it's just going to get more expensive. And we want to make sure that we can take care of our kapuna and our folks so they can age in place or, you know, have a good quality of life. And the last, you know, Senator Elafante mentioned silver alerts. I know I've talked about it before. It was one of those things that I worked on in the interim with the Alzheimer's Association and so happy that it's still alive. Hopefully it can get funded. I don't want to go too much into it because I know I mentioned it before, but I think it'll be a really good service and something that will just be that added layer to help find our kapuna who go missing. And, you know, since we just passed the budget, this is like hot off the press. So might be the first people to hear this, but in House Bill 1800, which is the state supplemental budget, there are some capital improvement projects that directly affect the Pearl City community. So just wanted to share some of the few items. So for Department of Defense, the legislature appropriated $5 million for siren maintenance and modernization. So can't say there's no money now because they're putting $5 million to, you know, modernize and fix our siren system. Some CIPs for our Pearl City Public Schools. Manana Elementary, $550,000 for plans, design and construction to replace their library windows. Momi Dali, Momi Dali Elementary, design and construction for perimeter fencing and security improvements. $3.5 million. Pearl City High School, design and construction to resurface the tennis courts, $650,000. And this one, I'm really excited about. $1.3 million to Pearl City High School for design, construction and equipment to renovate medical classrooms. So I don't know if you've heard, seen the news, but Waipahu High School recently renovated one of their spaces to be an actual medical clinic. And so in a partnership with Hawaii Pacific Health, there's actually doctors and nurses actually in the, and it's actually a working clinic where students on campus, where students can actually intern and get experience in the medical field. And what we want to do is do the same thing at Pearl City High School. So this money will go towards making that facility available and getting Pearl City High School students who want to go into the healthcare field, hands-on experience right on campus. So with that, you know, I'll take any questions.
Yeah, Representative Chun, thank you for sharing all that information. That is just great. And especially being innovative and creative, you know, because we need more doctors, more nurses. And what a way to start off our young on the right track early. So great. Board members, any questions? Go ahead there, Rodney.
Oh, thanks, Cory. Yeah, I really appreciate you doing, you know, what you're going to do for the kapunas. Because, you know, in my opinion, these folks have, you know, paid their dues. They've done their time. And it seems like they end up on the short end of the stick. Whereas, you know, people who don't do their time and take advantage of the system seems to get a lot of卡拉 coming their way. So I hope that, you know, the legislature sees that maybe we ought to tip that scale the other way. So I appreciate it, brother. And, oh, that nuclear bill.
All right. Board members, any other questions?
Cory, thank you. Hey, so for the long-term care, I think you're really hitting it right on the head as far as throwing money at the problem without direction for those funds never solves it. And one of the things that is very unique to Hawaii versus anywhere else in the country is we have a large Polynesian Asian population and usually somewhere around the 40s or 50s, parents move in with their kids or kids move in with parents. And the issue is if you don't have a good support network for that primary caregiver, that person is the key. So if they don't have relief, being able to take time off, take vacation, holiday, whatever, you're going to have a big, big problem when mom or dad is needing the care and then that primary caregiver is also like out of it. So having programs where the family members who have this responsibility, whether they know what they're doing or not, Asian, Polynesian, they're going to, they're going to do it. They're going to move in, they're going to have the parents move in to do a lot of this stuff. And I know what you're looking at is more like on the institutional side. But before it gets to that point, having resources available to support caregivers of the elderly and firm, that's the key, I think, to making those projects actually work. Think about that.
Yeah, no, that is something we're looking at. So probably the two biggest issues right now, the immediate issues are workforce and also the payment system. So with the workforce, the issue with long-term care is that there's all the, the young people wanting into healthcare. They're, you know, we're nurses. They don't want to do long-term care. They'd rather go to the hospital system because long-term care, you know, it's, it's hard work, right? And so one of the things is trying to address that issue is how do we build our workforce for long-term care? A sustainable workforce. And the second thing is just the payment methods, right? How do we, how do we figure out a way to address the rising costs? Because, you know, the thing is, there are a lot of people who do want to age in place and they don't want to go into an institution or someplace else. They want to be at home. So how do we provide these community-based services so they can stay at home? And that's really the goal of this whole thing is to make sure people can stay at home because there's a lot of people who do want to remain at home, but there's just not the community-based services to address those issues. So they end up having to go into an institution.
Okay, anybody virtual? Representative Chun, okay, seeing none? Community, seeing none? Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Okay, and board members, I've got a typo on my agenda. Sorry, I did send it out to you, nobody caught it. We're going to go, right now on the agenda, we do have Mr. Nestor Garcia representing our Congressman Ed Case. We'll bring you up and then follow, they'll be followed by Mr. Vano.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board and for those who are listening in online. Nestor Garcia, for the record, Communications Director with Congressman Ed Case. I did share with the chairman, I'm not sure if he was able to get that in an e-newsletter, but we did share our second quarter neighborhood board report with you. And I have a hard copy that I distributed to the members who are present here. Want to go over it fairly quickly. He wants to talk about the congressman, wants to talk about the achievements of Congress actually did. Competing, despite of what you might see or hear. They passed, finally, the fiscal year 2024 budget, in which we're already like several months into it already. $1.2 trillion. Now, in that budget for fiscal year 2024, there are what we termed as CIP projects, I guess, from the federal government. 15 that the congressman was able to, to get from his colleagues to agree to. And one of the projects that is of a special importance to the people of Pearl City and Aia and all those that actually frequent the Poli Momi Medical Center, is the congressman was able to get $1.3 million to get an emergency backup generator for Poli Momi Medical Center. Now, the way we did that was to work with Ha'ima, Y Emergency Management Agency. We saw this as an emergency project in case there is a disaster and we need to keep our hospitals open. And so it would be nice to have an emergency backup generator at one of the key hospitals here in Central Oahu. $1.3 million for that backup generator. Yeah. In this second quarter neighborhood board report, Congressman also wanted to make mention of a project that I am supposed to be able to do for him every month. This is a video that we put together that can be seen on Olelo, Channel 49. Then it premieres like the third Sunday of each month. So this is another way to show his constituents and people of Hawaii, the viewers on Olelo, about the work and activities that the congressman does each month. So for April, let's see, we did video on his participation in the Lunar New Year Parade through Chinatown. There was a book drop that he did at the former Central Middle School. These are books that we often get from time to time from the Library of Congress, books that are free and we give them to students, yeah? Before Central Middle School, we gave one to keep, a stack of books to keep Papa Elementary School over in Mililani. So we do this one time to time. There was also a video of him in a kind of a special quiet ceremony. This was meant for the family of the late Congressman Mark Takai. And so the chairman of the House, well, he was the chairman, now is the leading, the ranking member, I guess, the ranking Democratic member of the House Veterans Committee, Congressman Takano of California. So he came to Hawaii in a very quiet ceremony with the family of the late Congressman present. We gave what's called a red letter certificate. What this is, is a highlight within a major bill. This is the pact bill that gives benefits to those veterans who suffered injuries from ancient origin and from burned pits in, in the Middle East. And so Congressman Takai was especially critical in getting passed in that pact measure. The ability for veterans who are affected by radiation poisoning out in the Pacific. So Congressman Takano took that part of the measure from the PACD Act and gave it in a certificate. That was framed to the family of Congressman Takano. So that's the video for April. We're going to have another video in May and this would be, he spent, well, more than an hour walking with his partner, his colleague, we call them partners. This is State Representative Adrian Tem of Waikiki. So he spent half the day in Waikiki going over what is important for the people there. This is the engine that drives the economy, obviously, and focused mainly on small businesses in Waikiki. So that's going to be the video that will feature in May on Olelo Channel 49. And finally, in this second quarter neighborhood board report, we want to feature an annual contest. We just finished, actually, closing out the entries. This is the Congressional Art Competition that each member of Congress has for middle and high school students. And the winner gets to have his or her entry displayed at Capitol Hill. Second place gets to have their artwork displayed in his office in Washington, DC. So we just wrapped that up and in future reports, I'll share with you who the winners will be for that contest. With that, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for those who are online, as you might have.
Okay, Nestor, thank you so much for the update from our congressman. And I know it's been a challenging last few months, but you do bring a good positive information back for us. Board members, any questions for Nestor? Doi Cuni?
Nestor, I'm interested in the Inflation Reduction Act specific to credit
Nestor, I'm interested in the Inflation Reduction Act specific to credits that are provided for those who are engaging and new opportunities for renewable energy. Is that something that you guys talk about on the newsletters and town halls? Or is it something that congressman would be interested in sharing his thoughts on as far as, um, what needs to be done here? State goal is 2045, 100% renewable, so that's not too far away. Any comment on that?
Oh, yeah, glad you brought that up because I forgot to mention. So, uh, just recently, I think, I think it was announced today, in fact, that, uh, the Hawaii State Office of the Green Infrastructure Office, I think it's embedded in the Office of, um, Business Economic Development Tourism, yeah? Uh, run by my good friend Gwen Yamamoto-Lau. So they got a 60-plus million dollar grant to, uh, develop, um, solar, solar projects for people that, uh, may not be able to qualify for a regular loan to secure a PV system for their home, 60 million dollars. Now, that, I think, came from the Inflation Reduction Act. Yeah. It's kind of a misnomer when you call it the Inflation Reduction Act because mu- much of that act, that federal act, actually has to do with, uh, environmental projects and dealing with, uh, you know, climate change. So 60-plus million dollars to be made available, I think the funding should come in September, actually. Yeah.
And that's earmarked just for solar or any type?
Just for PV systems. I can basically PV, solar systems, yeah? Rooftop systems. So, um, hopefully the money will be made available come September for that, yeah?
Okay, that's a good one. We could get more info for us. Okay, any other questions for Nestor? Board members? Virtual? See note? Nobody? Community? All right, well, thank you for the update.
Thank you, Chairman.
All right, take care. Okay, moving on to, uh, our city officials and perfect timing, Val. Perfect timing. Uh, and right now, at this, this point, we'll, uh, we'll bring on, uh, uh, Mr. Gina Bono, uh, representing our mayor, and he is the director of facility maintenance. And we've seen a lot of him lately.
Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, Neighborhood Board Members. Uh, as Vice Chair mentioned, I have been quite busy with town halls, but it has been enjoyable and it was great to actually see Chair Vary, uh, Vary at the, uh, the AIA Town Hall in Salt Lake. Uh, the mayor's highlights for April in his newsletter, he'd had his 2024th State of the City address held at Mission Memorial Auditorium. He wanted to, he did highlight his key initiatives with affordable housing, public safety, homelessness, improving DPP and this continued effort to improve city services. As I mentioned, Mayor Blangiari and the cabinet are going through town halls. We have gone through five already, there are seven left. Um, Thursday, this Thursday is in Manoa, May 2nd is Nanai Ikapono, May 16th, Waialua Elementary, May 23rd, Coco Head District Park, May 30th, Haula Elementary School, and lastly, June 6th, Kanelo Elani Elementary School in Waipahu area. So if anyone wants to come out to those town halls, it is a perfect opportunity to talk story with the mayor as well as the cabinet to address any of the issues that you may have. It's been an enjoyable experience and this cabinet and the mayor are trying our best to do, uh, its duty to serve the community and its constituents. Uh, the city did sign in agreement with the Department of Health to open a behavioral health crisis hub in Evilay that addresses homelessness and affordable housing for individuals that are mentally distressed. And it's a great collaboration that's being done with the state of Hawaii. Uh, the Royal Hawaiian Band finally got its permanent home at Waikiki Vista, which is the city's largest affordable housing purchase to date. Uh, it never had a permanent home. They were practicing either at the Shell or Blaisdell Center. Uh, now they have their own facility that they can call a home. It also co-call, uh, includes storage spaces and offices that they never had before. I mentioned about the city, uh, town halls, six more to go. All right, going to the questions from the board. Member Wong asked about, um, how to address clogged storm drains to prevent potential floods? So residents can report clogged strain, uh, storm drains via a few ways. There is an email, dfmroads@honolulu.gov, or the 311 Honolulu app, which is probably the most effective way of getting some of the concerns. Uh, there was a constituent from Palisades that came to the town hall. He mentioned about some guardrails being damaged as well as signs. He actually went to the 311 app. It was addressed quickly and now it's being scheduled for repair this summer. So the app is a wonderful tool for any residents to really address any of the concerns with infrastructure. All right. Stream maintenance, there was a question from Mayor, uh, Member Inoue regarding vegetation growth on the east side of the bridge near Children's House at Pomoy Street. Waimano Stream is mostly a private stream and therefore the city only maintains under the bridge and 10 feet to the left or right of it. Otherwise, the stream is primarily, uh, the responsibility of the owners, private owners.
I'm sorry, repeat that?
What do you want to know?
About the stream? The stream doesn't run across any private property that I'm aware of.
If there's a, it is owned by private property though, I mean, private owners though.
No, it's not.
No. If it, whose owners are responsible is mostly private, it may not be a resident owner, it could be a, a owner that just owns that land that includes the stream.
The land across Pomoy Valley, up in the valley?
If there is concern, um, Member Lee, I will certainly, uh, clarify that, but it is our understanding much of it is privately owned.
Yeah, Brendan, what we'll have to do is do our research on that.
Yeah, because I believe it's against state law for a private owner to own a river, even if it runs through its land. Oh, yeah.
Uh, Manoa is a classic example, much of the stream is actually owned by its residents.
No, it's.
Yes. Mano, it is.
He's speaking.
And that's, that is really the concern that, uh, we have in Manoa. It's this misunderstanding of jurisdictional responsibility of stream maintenance.
And I believe, I believe the Hoist Supreme Court has ruled on this. This, this came up in the cases on Maui.
If you have.
Private landowners were trying to claim that, and they lost.
We can clarify, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can thoroughly clarify, yes.
I'll also bring stuff next month. Thank you.
Yep. All right, moving on.
We'll visit that next month.
Concerned by residents' socket regarding confined space testing in manholes, unfortunately, that is in litigation and I can't further comment on that matter. Moving forward, I mentioned about the damaged guardrail and signage that's being addressed. Uh, grass overgrowth, a resident is concerned with the overgrown grass at Pearl City District Park Baseball Field and is requesting funds to replace old maintenance equipment. The resident informed DPR and was transferred to District 5 Office. The resident was informed that maintenance was behind schedule due to outdated equipment. DPR's response, the mowing crew supervisor, is taking steps to minimize disruption to the mowing schedule by offering overtime to operators to keep up with the park demands. A request to purchase additional equipment to replace the outdated equipment has already been submitted in the previous budget. In the meantime, if and when needed, we'll be reaching out to the districts to request to utilize their machines to help keep operations uninterrupted. Gymnasium maintenance, a resident requests funding for roof repair on the Pearl City District Park's gymnasium. The resident noticed that puddles from inside the gymnasium when it rains. The Department of Parks and Recreation will be adding the Pearl City District Park Gymnasium Roof Repair to the DPR CIP list, so it's been prioritized. Lastly, Member Doran asks if homeless outreach and navigation for the unsheltered or HONU requires an SMA permit and an EA to operate in city parks? HONU is temporary operations that does not make any permanent improvements to a site. The program has been in operation for over four years and when operating in city parks follows the process of obtaining a park from DPR. Uh, DPP's response, the governor's emergency proclamations related to homelessness have suspended HRS Chapter 205A relating to coastal zone management and Chapter 343 relating to environmental impact statements to this extent necessary to expedite the acquisition, construction, repair, renovation. I won't go through it, but bottom line, it does not require an EA or an SMA permit. With that, I will entertain any questions that the board may have.
Okay, Mr. Bono, thank you so much for the, uh, updates. And if you can get back to the mayor town, thank you for these town halls. I, I think it's so healthy for the community. I've actually gone back in the videos, looking at the other town halls where I'm educating and getting, you know, understanding other community issues. And also, uh, you know, I like to hear what the mayor has to say with trying to solve some of those issues that come up, which are tough. And of course, I appreciate your patience that you had at our town halls. We continue to work.
No worries. I actually appreciate your patience, members. Uh, it's not a difficult, uh, job. It's a difficult job for you. It's something that you guys volunteer and I appreciate all that you do for the community.
Yeah, well, thank you. So Rodney Holt, we're gonna go to virtual. We got Guy Anoy waiting patiently, but the vice chair following. Oh, the vice chair?
Actually, Charmin is first.
Go ahead, Charmin.
Thank you for the report. Um, and last month, when I mentioned the HONU, um, I noted that the first HONU started before the proclamation. And I think the response then was, and I think you just repeated it, that you do get a park permit. And so I still haven't seen that permit. If you could email that and email, um, the response in writing so it's clear because the HONU started before the proclamation. Um, part of it seems to be that near the, the tidal wave zone, so I'm not sure how that works, but you know, just if you could email that. And I wanted to, um, clarify really quickly, um, part of, we've been going back and forth on the dump truck and I appreciate your help with that. Um, but I think where we stand now is I have to follow up on my own. Um, my original request was if we could find out who paid for the chrome plated rims. And so did you want me to follow up on my own on that request as well?
I can respond to this, Vice Chair. So there has been departmental, um, ping pong going on. Uh, E and V is working on a response, a formal response, and you should be getting one, uh, very shortly. They do acknowledge the spikes and therefore will respond accordingly.
And then the last one is, could you just clarify, um, the status, uh, okay, first the guardrail. Um, you know, a lot of times for all of us who live in Palisades, there's a few of us, every time the guardrail gets hit, we assume that there is a natural reporting and that, you know, residents don't have to go to 311 to report a guardrail that's been damaged through an accident because that's like, it seems like it would be a natural process, but I think it is. And then number two, could you just share with the board the latest status of the pig sign, which is different than what we discussed last month?
I, I couldn't.
Yeah, Charmin, you were breaking up towards the end.
Could you clarify for the board the status of the pig crossing sign? And two, whether the police report to the city when the guardrail is broken? Because most times that guardrail in Palisades is broken after an accident.
Palisades, it's still about the Palisades guardrails and sign?
And the pig crossing sign, few things.
I, we've talked, yeah, we can cite more on the pig crossing sign.
Yeah.
One of the things is, what I'm gonna do is officially request it in writing. It'll be a letter from the Pearl City Neighborhood Board to DFM requesting that two, uh, pig crossing signs be placed in this, in the appropriate locations for safety purposes.
Because it was a sign.
Yeah, it's on some teenager's wall right now. The signs that were volunteered, purchased. I knew they wouldn't last long.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear, what is, what is the status? I didn't hear you, I'm sorry.
We, we're, we're gonna, uh, Mr. Bono said that we'll follow up after the meeting, uh, but I, I owe him a letter, so he's got an official, uh, requirement for the pig signs.
So has the city's position changed on the signs?
What?
Last month, last month, the month before last, when we were on break, it was we can't do the pig signs. So has that changed? I'm trying to clarify, as you know, this is not, you know, not my request, it's coming from our community.
I, I'm not sure, did she say we could not do big signs?
Well, it was, it was our understanding that you guys couldn't do the big signs.
It is not a standard sign for the sitting county of Honolulu.
It has our vice chair.
Therefore, I recommended that the board, if this is a priority of the community, to submit a resolution for consideration by the sitting county to provide these special unique signs for Palisades.
Okay, are you, are you good, Vice Chair?
Okay, um, you know, I'll email you because there are, and we've been discussing this and it's a lot of work for, you know, something that's kind of simple, but that's okay, change is hard sometimes. But there are some horse crossing signs on city roads on this island. So, you know, there are some unique signs that the city can do, but you know, well, I guess I'll drop the resell.
Okay, Charmin, we'll work this and we'll, we'll satisfy our, our requirements for our area. So, uh, board members, any other questions for Mr. Bono?
Member Inoue has one.
Oh wait, I, I got, uh, uh, Guy is waiting patiently. Guy, go ahead.
Uh, Director Albeidon, thank you very much for the report and follow-up. Uh, the concern actually is under the bridge. Did someone check under the bridge to see if there's any debris that collected under there that would, uh, possibly cause an overflow?
Debris under?
Right.
Yeah, so I, I'm pretty certain that the crew does go and monitor whether or not there is debris. Uh, in addition, if there is potentially a flood event ahead of time, the, the crews go out to monitor hotspots to, to address any potential clock, uh, clogs, that being one of them.
Okay, yeah, I mean, the concern was, you know, like, um, I would, I would think that the, uh, community of Manoa never foresaw that, uh, horrific, uh, overflow on the river, right? That, um, that was pretty bad.
I believe the city and the state have, uh, addressed that and have taken proactive steps should, again, uh, should there be a pending storm that they go through a protocol to go to the hotspots to ensure that those areas are being cleared prior to, uh, a storm event that potentially might be a, that will lead to a, a major flood.
Yeah, especially because, you know, for Palisades, one way in, one way out, yeah? So it's, uh, pretty daunting. Uh, I've seen that river, uh, where, um, I could see the water from my car, so this on, on, on the, uh, the west side, that was pretty daunting when I saw that, it's like, holy smokes. Yeah, okay, well, thank you and, um, good to know that at least the city's aware of this and then, uh, I guess if you can have a report, uh, to, that pointed out, uh, when did they go and look?
Would you?
Brendan?
Some dates on that. Thank you.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a follow-up to that question. What does, what's the, um, criteria for the city to consider a hotspot? What does, what's the criteria for the city to consider a hotspot?
There are low lying areas to consider. Wherever there are streams, obviously there is history in terms of where potential floods have, not potential, but where critical floods have occurred.
Okay.
And therefore, we have utilized those as lessons learned to identify hotspots.
So thank you for sharing that. So then Palisades is not a hotspot. I've, in Pacific Palisades for 55 years, that stream has never, or that bridge has never once flooded.
Correct.
So you're now saying that's not.
However, it does not mean we're not monitoring to make sure it's not clear. Under the bridge.
Well, so I'm just trying to see clarity because you use the specific, right, but you use the specific words that the city monitors and goes out and checks before a potential flood event in hotspots. Which is why I asked the clarifying question, what does the city consider a hotspot? And you just said historical data. So then by that definition, Pacific Palisades, can I finish? Can I finish my question, please?
Sure.
So by that definition, Pacific Palisades is not a hotspot, so is Pacific Palisades.
Let me, let me clarify.
Thank you.
Obviously, it may or may not be a hotspot. If your question is specifically you wanting to know if the bridge is a hotspot, I will follow up.
Thank you, because the specific question from our other board member was, does the city go and check Pacific Palisades Bridge? They do. But you said, you didn't say they do. You said that they check hotspots. So that's why I asked that question about hotspots. In addition to hotspots. Thank you for clarifying.
Absolutely.
Hey, Dan.
Um, yeah, sorry, Chair Verre. Director Albeidon, yeah, I guess the concern was, you know, down by the lower part of Momilani where they had that horrific flooding. I mean, where, you know, water just was shooting out of the drains beyond belief. Looked like an upside down waterfall, you know, so. Yeah, just in case, because like I said, one way in, one way out, be pretty bad. Thank you.
Okay, Dan.
Yes, and this is also a question for Chair Verre. My impression is that there was never, hasn't been any real resolution concerning the flooding on. I mean, my perception is the city didn't, at least the two, at least one of the residents advised of his rights in a, in a forthcoming manner so that he could sue you guys, so I.
I don't want to give any excuses, but I will say on behalf of the court, they have a different position. And therefore, it has gone take, it has gone through the legal route and therefore, it's beyond departmental control. I empathize with the owners. I have met with them personally. I have gotten to know Ms. Psyki and the other residents, and I have continued to empathize with them. We are, for me personally, I'm doing my best to see how we can do more, but unfortunately has taken the litigious route. And at that point, not much can be done.
But she, isn't she now precluded from legal?
No. I don't believe so.
Yeah, the litigation continues, you know, although we sent our letter to corporate counsel requesting a reinvestigation. They, they said that they couldn't do that. They're gonna continue on through the litigation, take its route. And then afterwards, the findings from that, there could be new, it's, the other, the other people are just waiting in the, in the distance. They can, they can file their claims afterwards.
So that, for the people who were advised to file on time, if they win, the other people can come back and say, we, we too.
Right, and that other route would be through our, our council member to put a resolution in for the other people.
In other words, pay, pay comparable compensation, yeah. Because the city clearly failed.
But we've, we've done everything we can at this point. We engaged the mayor at the town hall. They were there to talk and, and Mr. Bono spent a lot of time with him and his staff. But I think we're, we're definitely.
Court did respond as well back to the resolution. There is a formal letter responding back to the resolution as well.
Rodney?
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Wong.
You know what's coming next?
Oh, yeah.
How's those ridership numbers?
Yes, I, I always jokingly ask DTS to provide that in advance, but they have their own priorities as well.
Okay, so none of this, okay, cool. Um, I have a question on the weekend opening times of the rail. Um, and I make my Sunday run and scoot on by that place and it's seven o'clock. What time is the opening for that rail to start operation?
I wouldn't be able to answer that.
Yeah, the reason why I'm saying this is because, and it's not even my district, but, you know, there's a lot of Waipahu folks that, you know, use a rail for transportation to the swap meet. So I would figure that they would open that rail a little bit earlier to, you know, go ahead and facilitate them, you know. We open it up early, maybe we might get more ridership numbers, eh? So, and I had one comment from my good friend, based on the ridership numbers. He's from Mililani, by the way, in Mexico. He says, probably you guys should downscale to maybe handy vans, depending on the ridership numbers. So, but, you know, that's all. So on the streams in Pearl City, we have two streams that come together down there by Pearl City Shopping Center. One is the YL stream, and I think the other one is a Pearl City stream that starts up above Pearl City High School, if I'm not mistaken. So when they monitor the streams, they actually go in and use UTVs to kind of go up the stream and check everything out.
If you're asking what are processes to monitor, I, I get, that's related to the query that's been asked.
Yeah, because I mean, the only way you can find out is, you know, if you jump in and go have at it. So, you know, there's, there's, there's a lot of UTVs out there that can.
I will premise it in this manner. Obviously, there are priorities. There are communities that may be not in a better shape than other communities. So the department has to then make some critical decisions in terms of deciding where to provide maintenance most. However, when we have potential flood events that actually then disrupts our, our standard cycle in terms of maintenance and then we then have to adjust our schedules accordingly. So that is the dynamic of the Department of Facility Maintenance.
Right, right, right.
Until we are able to continue to find good men and women to come and join the city, we, we do our best with the limited funding, the limited staff, the limited equipment as we compete against other municipalities globally and, and everything.
Okay.
Appreciate it. Thanks.
All right, we gotta move on and.
Well, can I also follow up, Mr. Chair?
Okay.
Um, how many open positions does the department currently have?
We have just over 200 out of the 900.
Open positions?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Bono, thank you for the last 25 minutes.
No worries. My pleasure.
I was so far ahead of my schedule, we were gonna get Val up here quickly, but, but.
I appreciate again the board. Thank you very much.
I think you had a question from every board member today.
That's awesome. I look forward.
Thank you so much and we'll be, we'll be in touch and you'll get my letter here shortly.
Have a good evening. Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Our councilwoman. Val Okimoto, thank you so much for being in person with us today. It is very special to us. And I know you've, all the time that you're putting into council, it's been challenging as well.
Good evening, Chair. Thank you so much. Val Akino Okimoto, councilmember for District Eight, and I appreciate the chair being patient. I actually was speaking to some Kiki youth about careers. And so if you don't see me here, it's because I'm usually running around doing something else, but I wanted to be here in person and I'm grateful for the opportunity. I gotta thank your chair and I know that you guys, like Director Albano said, I know that this is all voluntary. I, I serve on a board as a voluntary member also, a different kind of board, but I know that when you guys are here, it's because you care about the community. So thank you for, you know, your interest and your, the questions that you guys gave. It, it doesn't just keep us on our toes, but it helps us to stay really invested and rooted into the community because we can't, we don't just service one part of the island, so it does help us. And I do want to thank Director Albano as well, because working with him and members of the administrative, administrative cabinet have been really helpful. But once again, good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the board, members of the community, both here in person and virtually. You do have in front of you my written report. Like I said in previous, in previous reports, you guys kind of get my report at the end of the month and they're created at the beginning. So you get the benefit of having this as well as some updates that occur later on. So we are in budget season right now, so I'll send them, I'll send my written report. If you have any questions on that, I'll take that. But I did want to report on some of the things happening with our budget. We do have our, our next batch of amendments. They are due, the deadline for that will be this Thursday, May 25th. And the beauty of the process, the budget process is that we meet, the departments come and talk to us and we go back and forth. And we have these side meetings to hear how we can improve the budget, what we need to do to balance it. So things pertaining to Pearl City specifically, and you, I think we did hear the concern of the Pearl City District Park Gym. That was brought to our attention after, I think, the initial budget requests were put in. But we, we were able to meet with part of our Parks Department, sat down with them on several issues, concerns from the community. And we are looking at adjusting some of our amendments so that we can put in $2 million to address that CIP project that needs to be, that needs to get done. That is a top priority of our Department of Parks and Recreation because they see that as not just a need, but I mean, not just a want, but it's a need. And, you know, I used to teach and play basketball in that gym, so I was kind of sad to hear that it had the roof. Although I understand that the roof had been left not maintained to, to the degree that it's at right now. One of the things that was mentioned at the, the town hall with the mayor, again, mahalo to Chair Verre for being there and representing the community so well. So one of the things mentioned was a dog park, and we've had several constituents contact my office from different parts of Pearl City, Palisades and elsewhere, asking for a dog park. So in the budget, we did have money for a dog park and we had a specific location. We were looking at the Manana Kai Neighborhood Park, but after seeing now with parks, we realized, and I tried really hard because it's a park that's not being used. We tried to see what we could do to make that possible. That's, that's still in the works, subject to change. I, I am gonna have to meet with the Fulan and, or whoever's the, the owner of that shopping area to see. Right now, there's a parking that's the issue. The park itself would be a great location, but there's no access to it, no parking. So we are looking, after meeting with the Parks Department, where we're looking at other parts of Pearl City. And hopeful that one of them, we have one suggestion, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna announce it because I don't know if Parks, Parks is gonna look into it to see if it'll work, but we're hopeful. We're hopeful that that will be something that can be done. We also are putting in additional funding to design the replacement police station. So earlier in this term, you know, as, as a member of, when I became a councilmember, we visited the Pearl City Police Station and the Fire Station. Not sure if many of you know, I'm a daughter of a firefighter, so I really am invested in our public safety and how we can make sure that our first responders and law enforcement are cared for. And as a public safety chair, this is something that's important. Pearl City is in dire need of changing the fire station, which I'll talk about, or updating that, but also the police station. So we put in additional funding for that. We also put in funding to help to, to improve our, our, how to address our law enforcement needs. That's gonna be top of my priority as well as the Pearl City Fire Station. So I was able to visit that as well last year, and that station really needs to be pretty much torn down. So the good news is, over the last year, the fire department finally was able to work with the church. We're looking at, many of you have seen that right by Palisades, there's that intersection, Imano Home Road and Como Mai, where the border of water right now has like a little storage makeshift location. So right behind that, there's a church, and we're happy to find out that the fire department of the city has been able to work with the church. So I think the acquisition of that is where we're at right now, and we are moving towards having the design stage. So we're working on that. I've met with DDC, met with DLM, as well as our fire chief, chief, chief to make sure that we're, we're working the process. Chief Haun knows that I'm not gonna forget this. Like I, I call it my Pearl City Fire Station. It's something very important. If you ever get a chance to go visit the firefighters down there, they're working hard and their living conditions are really subpar, so advocating for that. Some other things on the budget are 14 miles of roads in Pearl City to be repaved, including five and a half miles of Imano Home Road. And that's the main things that pertain to Pearl City in the budget that we're working on. Our committee hearings will be held next week. We just had full council on the 17th. And we have, I'm holding my public safety committee hearing on Thursday next week. Forgive me for not, no, I think it's May 2nd, May 2nd at 1:00 PM. And we are including an information briefing on the Oahu Wildlife Preparedness. They will be doing our presentation. I know with summer coming and, you know, we will have less rain, it gets hot and dry. So we're trying to be prepared on what we can do to make sure that we're not just educating our residents, but also do what we need to do on our end to prepare for any potential fires. So as, as always, you can feel free to contact my office. My email is in the newsletter. You can also, it's valokimoto@honolulu.gov. The phone number in my office is 808-768-5008. You can also follow my social media. We do a lot of updates there. And that's at Councilmember Val Okimoto, but I will gladly take any questions that you may have at this time.
Okay, thank you very much for the, the updates and especially the, the money acquired to take care of that gym because.
We're working. So I've had to shift funds, so that's in the process. And that money was actually somewhere else. I'm gonna have to take it from part of the budget that I had elsewhere because that's a, that's a need versus wants that were in other parts of my district. So working with parks, I think that's top of their priority, as you heard Director Albano say as well.
Great. Okay, board members, any questions? Go ahead.
Good to see you.
Good to see you too.
Councilmember, so seeing that you are the vice chair of the Parks Enterprise Services and Culture and the Arts Committee.
Correct.
She just heard the director's report that they are short 200 positions.
Correct.
Is there something that in the budget or the council can do to help facilitate or set a pipeline to start filling these positions?
No, great question.
We're, we're hearing, we're hearing of catastrophic events that are happening in places that don't historically, like I said, how Palisades has never flooded in my 54 years of life. Noilani Street has never flooded in 54 years of my life, and now it just had a devastating flood that now the city's facing a lot, possible lawsuits over. So is there something we can do to try and address their shortfall of manpower to help alleviate some of these things?
Board member, great question. And I will say, you know, last year when I got into the council, I was pretty hard on all the departments because they had so many vacancies for, some of them for more than 10 years. And to me, I didn't understand that. It wasn't acceptable. So the council is really taking a look. There, we've tried to offer different suggestions on how we can, what we can do to, not abandon. I think there's a, the term that they can't just abolish those positions, but we are, is it up? Deactivate, yes. There are certain things that they can, to shift the money around. But the bottom line really is we need people to go back to work. They are trying really hard. We do recognize that we have to pay, you know, salaries that are, that are comparable to what the work is. And so there's, I mean, the police department is offering something that the mayor announced during his State of the City. But if we could get, when I'm talking to the department heads, it's the manpower that they need. Manpower and they have equipment difficulties. That's another issue that we're dealing with across the board in all departments that have challenged department heads and chiefs to really look into. With the, during COVID, it really became an issue with the supply chain. So right now, that's another issue, but that's a great question. I think, you know, actually 200, I hate to say this, but that's pretty good because in some departments, they're really, a lot, have a lot of vacancies. When people ask me, you know, when I talk to the department heads, really, they just need, they need employees. And I think for some reason during COVID, and not just in the, in the public sector, but the private sector also, people don't want to go to work anymore. And I think we made it too attractive to stay home. So that's something that I really hope we can encourage people to go back to work. If you want your parks and, you know, our community safe, we, we have government positions. And like any government position, the private sector will always pay more, but in the government positions, you know, the hope is that when you stay and you get benefits that will, that will pay off in the long run. So if you have suggestions, please do. I'm asking friends, like they want things open. I'm like, if you know anybody that will work, because they're looking for employees to work. That's what they need to help address our concerns. I mean, my staff and I, we're gonna take our own weed whackers and stuff and go out there sometimes, but luckily, when I let the parks know, they are able, once they are aware, they'll shift their, their crews and go and address either the park trash pickup or the grass or something that needs to be addressed at that time. Thank you.
Yeah, Brendan, thanks for bringing that up. Uh, I see it in my neighborhoods, you know, people that are, are being subsidized by the city.
It's a challenge.
And I see people that are too relaxed and I know they're able bodies.
Yeah.
But I, we really need to get good people.
If you can encourage, you know.
These are good jobs in the city.
They are, they are good.
I just don't understand, but, uh, but anyway.
You know, when I meet the people from parks, they're, they, they love what they do. They, they've worked there for, you know, they're committed and I love that they're, they're compassionate, their passion for serving, but they are, we're dealing with the shortage of staff as well as the, the equipment that we need to provide for them. So I just encourage anybody, if they know anyone who would like to, even somebody, I met somebody the other day, he, he's retired, but he landscaped. So I'm like, hey, if you want to work for the parks, you know, I'm sure we could find you a job because they were asking about how we can get our parks more maintained. So.
High school graduations are coming up. We need to be at the door. Vice Chair, you're, you're ready to engage.
Um, I, do you know what, uh, just so that I make sure we're talking about the same thing. So there's, you know, vacant positions and then there's vacant funded. And I just have a real simple question. So our unemployment rate is about three percent, which is actually pretty stable. So I'm not sure, maybe people.
Sorry if I, your, your audio breaks up and I can't hear you.
Can you get closer to your mic? It's, it's, it's every other word.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I said our unemployment rate is about three percent. So maybe we feel people are un, underemployed because they don't have two or three jobs. So three percent is pretty stable for the state of Hawaii. So um, I'm just not sure, um, you know, where that line of thought is coming from, but I'll go ahead and research it since, you know, it's an interesting topic, I guess. Um, my question is there's vacant positions and then there's vacant funded positions. What is the estimated, um, carryover?
I would have to get back to you because every department is actually different. So I can.
So it's in the beginning of the budget, like hundred million or so usually. I mean, it's pretty really high. If you could email everybody what the projected unspent money is that was budgeted in this budget that's coming forward. That we don't expect to spend, how much that is. That would be helpful. It's usually like in the first twenty pages.
Okay. Sorry, Vice Chair. So you're asking for the, because I still couldn't hear clearly, but maybe Chair Verri, did you hear exactly what she's asking me to get? Carryover? From the underfunded? Is that what she said?
What the carryover is.
From the.
In the general budget, operating budget, the carryover usually includes the vacant funded position money. So just what that estimate is, because it's usually like eighty million, a hundred million.
I'm just trying to understand the questions. I can put it down and make sure I get this right. Um.
Just what the carryover is. So every, the city and county has this.
Sorry, Vice Chair, carryover from, can you repeat the carryover from what?
Yeah, you could just ask OCS what the estimated carryover is and he's, they'll, they'll be able to tell you. It's usually in the first couple of pages of the budget.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get that beauty.
Yeah. Okay. Just so I know exactly.
Yeah. Be descriptive so that we can follow it up.
Vacant positions. Okay.
Okay. Uh, any, let's see, anybody else? Rodney?
Hi, it's Councilman Okimoro.
Hello.
Um, I've always said this, um, but with the, um, you know, understaffing of the departments, uh, especially for the cleanup parks and whatnot. Is there any way we, exactly. Is there any way we could get the state and the prison system involved on this one? Because I mean, we got the biggest workforce in Halaava and Deleanam. And I think at one time, the ladies from Ko'olau was actually, uh, taking care of the median strips down there on, uh, Kalanianaole.
Okay. I, I would definitely ask. I, I've, I've never been asked that question. I, I'm guessing that if it's a state.
More of a state issue because that's the act.
Body than we have the city parks. There might, there might be some conflict or something we need to figure out accordingly.
You gotta work together in these times. So, you know.
Definitely. I agree.
Make it work, make it work.
I just got to figure out, um, because there's always going to be procedure and things that we have to do whenever we're dealing with state and city, um, entities. But I'll put that down. So you're talking about just the city park cleanups?
Anything.
Yeah, I think partnership with a state.
But you gotta pay a new employee. Changing.
Do we have, I know on, on Kauai, there is, there was workforce. I know here we do too, but I'm guessing they have specific things that they can, that they're allowed to do. So I'll, I'll go ask. I, I think there's no harm in asking and maybe between Director Albano and myself, we can figure out what the answer is to that. But I'm always open to ideas. So thank you for the suggestion.
Used to have farms and used to go out and work on the farms.
Okay. Um, maintenance. Okay.
If I'm not sure why. Well, Mr. Awong.
Okay. My eyes are, I get it also. I'm like dual and near, I'm like dual, near and far sighted now. So thank you for helping me.
So I'm a little bit surprised that the question falls to me, but when you started, shortly thereafter, there was all of this hubbub about these raises and that's like happening again. So can you fill us in on what your plan is with regard to raises that are the same situation as last time, which is somebody other than you guys determines that you're eligible for it, but everyone, including you, can decline to take said raise?
Thank you. I, I really would encourage, um, every, not just members of the board, but you know, any resident in Hawaii or even in the state to, to go back and listen to, um, it could even be back to the hearings that we had last year. I've, I've actually never shied away, but I've pretty much stated my, my, um, my reasons in public. But I would encourage everybody to kind of get the whole picture because Oahu is a different county. We function differently than any other county in the state. But also, um, our salary commission works differently. And I had to learn a lot last year dealing with how actually our county, we were at that time getting paid even lower than Kauai and the other counties, even though our population is bigger. And also those counties, they, they actually don't, and I, when I say don't touch, it's because it should be a separate, um, decision. So the salary commission, they are by charter designed to make sure that the administration and the city council, our salaries are comparable to each other or to the, the work that we're doing. And what I learned last year, because I had no idea the process either. I had to learn it like everybody else. But I think the unfortunate thing is the media will only put out what grabs people's attention and causes, you know, the, the public to have outcries if they act. I, I would encourage, I've been to other boards and when I explained to them the whole story or the other facts, other members who didn't understand and were against my decision actually understood and they, and they appreciated me sharing the whole story. So with the charter commission last year, what they found was their task of making sure that the administration and the council were compensated properly for the level of work that we're required to do as well as each other. The council was so far behind and I learned that out of thirty-three years, nineteen of those thirty-three, thirty-three years, the council had rejected it. So what the voters misunderstand is they think that we choose the number, we choose the, the salary commission, which that's actually not true, not completely sure at least. And we don't vote on anything. So the salary commission has a job. Their task is to, to state the, to, to state the salaries or, um, decide on the salaries. And then it goes through, our council has the opportunity to, if we choose to, to reject it or part of it, or you, I think you can't reject part of it. You have to reject everything for us and the administration. And we can't suggest like, okay, can we amend this? We can't do that. It has to be whatever they present to us, all or nothing. So once I learned that the council had been so far behind, um, then I realized, okay, why were they so far behind? And it, it, to me, what I see it as, because we are in a position where we're elected every four years, I, I think, and I was in the state legislature. So there are times I had to defer that too because of COVID or budget. But it seemed like multiple times, nineteen, so almost two decades, nineteen of the thirty-three times, the council would reject it because the appropriate, I, I feel like it becomes a political thing. When you're worried about the public outcry, you do that. So because of that, the council's salary was so low. And I think because everybody focuses on the sixty-four percent jump, they don't recognize the reasoning for it. Um, if you can go back to even our last council meeting, um, the salary commission chair, she explained everything. She explained where we're ranked and all of that. It was data and, and information given out as to where they were. They actually had it higher, but they, they lowered it. And it's because we are really dealing with a four billion dollar budget. And I didn't recognize this, you guys. I was a special education teacher, a mom, but I recognize when you get to the council, you're dealing with twenty-something departments, dealing with a four billion dollar budget. You're meeting with all them and you're making decisions. And so it is a really, it's a full-time job. And I recognize that the salary commission saw that. And to me, when I saw that, you know, and I have people that disagree with me, even people in my own office, they're like, doesn't matter what happens in the future. I saw it as, I would not want myself, my decision to just want to get reelected, um, have to put a burden on the future of the council. Because what happened unfortunately previously, for whatever reasons they had, it put us in a situation where we were so far in the deficit when the salary commission tried to catch us up. It looks bad. I get it. But I hope that people really go and listen to the facts and not just what the media is saying and not just what the public who are not fully informed are stating. So they caught us up to a certain level and, you know, and I did state that I, I understood the public outcry at this point. But really every year our staff gets an increase, everybody gets an increase. Collective bargaining happenings happen. So because of that, the salary commission thought that they were, they would keep us on that scale. I did say like the rest of the council members that we didn't think it was the most appropriate time, but my concern is if we make this a political thing again and we have the opportunity to keep on deferring it, deferring it, when I am far gone, there's going to be a council member in my seat again, who's going to struggle because they have to take the brunt of having to defend the position that the salary commission did, edu, with making educated decisions. And so I stand by it. I understand the public outcry. I wish that, you know, if I had my way, if I like won the lottery, I would do this for free, but my reality is I, I have children and I roof to put on my head like everybody else. So I hope that you can understand that. Um, and we'll see, we have a bunch of resos right, out there right now. And I, I will again stand by what is stood before that, although I understand everybody's, um, the, the, the optics of it, that if you really listen to the facts, if you really listen to it, then hopefully you can.
So the bottom line is it's not a part-time job is what you're saying?
It's not. It's not a part-time job. Yes. Yeah. Not the way, at least not the way that I do it. I'm not, I can't speak for everybody else, but.
Okay. Well, thank you for that response. And, uh, uh, we got, Dan, we got, you got something quick? Cause we got to move on.
Yeah, I won't take much time. No, I agree. A full-time position, you should have a living wage. Okay. Are you, do you have limits on outside income?
Do you have limits on outside income?
Yeah.
Um, not that I know of, but if you're like me, there is no time for outside jobs.
No, but I think that's one of the things that, that was, you know, effective or would be effective, right? Because Mayor Caldwell had all this big outside income. And like the Congress, the Congress people have a, uh, a limit on their outside incomes. Something like, something like twenty, twenty-eight thousand.
Yeah. And I'm not speaking for the administration. I will say if you could watch the town hall with the mayor, he actually, I was grateful for Mayor, um, Van Jari, and he also stated the reasoning for what the salary commission did. But I would encourage any resident to go and look into what all of those council members do. I, I don't, I can't work other than the job. I don't have time. But others actually do. And maybe they see that as a part-time job. I don't. I wouldn't be here right now if this were my part-time job.
But I, but I think a limit, a limitation on outside income would be, would be appropriate.
I, 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 I guess I will say the bottom line is if you're doing this job the way it should be, you actually have no time to do anything else. And that's how I live it. That's my reality.
We're, we're, we beat that horse, guys.
Thank you.
Okay. We got one more. Vice Chair's got one more question for you than I got. Two things.
Okay. Thank you, Chair.
Go ahead.
Thank you. It's, it's okay. I found the carryover. It's almost a billion dollars. So I, I already found it. Thank you.
A million or a billion?
A billion.
A billion. Okay. Thank you, Vice Chair.
That's budgeted, but not spent money.
For vacancies, you said specifically or just all?
That's how much money the city budgets, but doesn't spend. There's a, like three percent or something is restricted, but it's a huge amount of money. That just, the city carries over every year.
Okay.
Okay. We've got two things here.
Okay. Yes, Chair.
As far as the dog park.
Yes.
My recommendation is that Blaisdell is the best place for that. The east side, Diamond Head side hardly ever gets used. And the precedence has already been set by the homeless dogs that are already there.
Okay.
Okay. And then lastly, I want to bring this to your attention.
Okay.
And with Mr. Albano, and I should have probably brought it up earlier. The board doesn't know this yet, but I'm feeling the brunt of it already in the community. The Maui fires have really impacted the insurance companies. So what they are doing right now with town home associations, they are raising their rates. In particular, one town home association had their annual fee raised two hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. That's, that's a hundred and fourteen homes.
In, in our district, you're.
In our district. That's the first. And I haven't heard about all the other ones yet. This is all starting now. It's starting to fester. My homeowners association hasn't got hit yet. Thank God. I won't mention any companies or anything like that. But I just want to bring it to your attention that it just, the community is getting the daylight sucked out of them. And we're, they don't have all this money. And I know what's coming up down the road here, and this is from Mr. Albano, is his turf, that stormwater drain fee that this board officially said we oppose is probably on your agenda down the road. We can't have that come in and, and get taxed on that. So, but anyway, I just wanted to bring that to your attention. And we've, we've got to put limits on insurance companies.
Okay.
That, that town home association is going to have to do, they're going to have to collect twenty-five hundred dollars from each homeowner. Go ahead.
I will tell you the saying that I have for insurance companies. I don't want to be a policyholder. I want to be a shareholder.
Okay.
Because data wants making a money.
Okay. All right. That's for community, anything? Don't say anything. Councilmember Okimoro, thank you so much. You've been up, I don't know how many minutes?
Thank you.
Twenty-three. He almost beat him out.
Sorry. Thank you. Good night.
That's, that's almost a whole hour there, you know. But, but thank you for coming and, uh, and we'll be in touch on, on some other issues with.
And Chair, maybe if you could email me specifics on this insurance that you just mentioned.
I'll, I'll get it out to all the legislators too.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, but she needs to know about it too, because they gotta pay for that. Okay.
Thank you, Chair.
So, uh, thank you so much. And, uh, and my apology to the board, I accidentally slipped over a representative Trish Luchica, because I didn't see her in the audience. But we do have her, uh, assistant. Omar, are you still online?
Omar? Sorry. I was meeting or I was muted. This is Erin from Office of Rep Luchica.
Erin. Okay.
Yeah. Hi. Um, I'll keep it short for you guys. Representative Luchica apologizes for not being able to attend in person. Uh, we still have one bill alive in the legislature right now. It's HB two zero eight three relating to school food. It will be heard tomorrow in conference, so we are hoping that it passes. There's no money appropriations, um, so fingers crossed. Um, it's a pilot program that's relating to local school food. Uh, the DOE goal by twenty thirty as well as a meatless option in schools. Um, so we will keep you updated on that at the next meeting. Um, next, our April newsletters uploaded onto the Google Drive. There you'll see the survey results of our legislative survey and some updates on these bills. We chose the bills because we received a lot of concern about them from constituents and just the general public. Um, you'll also see photos from our March Public Safety Sign Waving, which was a huge success. And we plan to have more of these events in the future. And then upcoming, we will be having a talk story at the Milani Uka Cafeteria, April thirtieth at five thirty P M. We've invited speakers from Honolulu Police Department, Honolulu Fire Department, Wine Electric and Queen's Health Systems. If you're free, please join us. And then lastly, if there's any questions for the representative, please let me know and she can hit you at the next meeting.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. And, uh, board members, any questions?
Erin, really quick, how are the bus, um, running from Waipio into Pro City District, um, going? I know there was a lot of effort by Councilwoman Luchica to put that together.
Yeah. So we've actually been working, uh, with Senator Elafonte with that, um, since he has more of the district, but we, unfortunately, neither of our bills that we introduced have moved beyond the legislature. They both died. Um, but this is a top issue for our office that we're still hoping to provide a solution for. Um, and we're, we're actually hoping to be able to work with the city and county on it if possible to, just to receive more support and put some pressure.
Okay. Sweet. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Seeing none from the board, community, none. Please give our regards to Representative Luchica for us. And thank you.
Thank you. Yep. Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to other agencies, we've got Mr. Duna Hodz representing Joint Base Pearl Harbor. Welcome, Duna. Where's your partner?
Victor sends his regrets. He's, uh, had an accident at the house. He, he actually broke his left toe. He sent me a gnarly picture. I'll share with you guys later on.
What did we say about seniors falling?
It's like a Navy safety report. It's just, it was not pretty. His leg was small. It's like a Navy safety report, it's just, it was not pretty, his leg was swollen. He sends his regrets, and he, I kind of got an update, I don't know, but you know Victor, it's, I have to transcribe from pidgin to English and then it's just, I don't know, he's, he's such a sad sack sometimes. Ongoing on the base, thanks for having me tonight. I appreciate the opportunity to speak not only for the base, but for also Red Hill, Red Hill updates and things like that. Um, you've heard it several times tonight, hurricane exercise is going on in the base right now this week. And if you've ever had anything to do with the fire department, the police department, emergency management, you know that this is a scary time of the year, when you realize how many things can happen and how quickly things can go south. So I encourage you to, to share with everybody in the community, anybody and everybody in your family. Have a plan, get a kit, stick to the plan, get a tent, get your generators tuned up, get all that good stuff happening. Uh, there's a hiring fair going on on thirtieth April at the Alamoana Hotel. This is Naval Facilities, uh, NAFAC, you know, Public Works for the Base. It's from nine to three-thirty on the thirtieth of April in the Lanai Garden there at the Alamoana. Plenty of jobs available. The octa coral is still, we're still going through the solutions for the octa coral. And if you don't remember what the octa coral is, this is that invasive type of coral that's in Pearl Harbor. We're trying to keep it to Pearl Harbor right now, so fishing has been curtailed because of the snagging hooks spreading the octa coral all over the place, so we, we don't want to do that. Uh, I guess I'll bounce, I'm going to go into the good news story. We had a great bike path cleanup this last weekend. Uh, we had sixty-three volunteers that I found, uh, I didn't find them. I put them together in four different locations. We had another twenty from the base in another location and another twenty over at Leahua. Uh, it was a great effort by members of your community, members of the IA community, civilian members, sailors, soldiers, airmen. I had a pair of Marines down from K Bay who just heard about it the day before and came down to do some things. So we're really proud of that. The Navy Closure Task Force, we have moved into a new building, uh, we've reestablished internet. I'll send you that report, this, this week's report, so you can pass it on to the community. Um, ongoing efforts to not only de-fuel, but make sure nothing else goes into these tanks and then to do the environmental remediation in that area. Uh, the only new news I can say right now is that we have ninety-nine percent of the A triple F out of the Red Hill site. That's only a small left, and of course, this is being barreled up and carted off to the mainland as hazardous material that it is. The other good news is that on the fifteenth of May, the Oahu Veterans Center, we're having a town, not a town hall, an open house. So that's, if you could help us spread the word, we would like to bust the seams out of the Oahu Veterans Center with people so we can spread the, the word about what's going on, what's really happening at Red Hill, so they can see how the tanks are going to be cleaned, so they can see what's going on and not just hear what they're reading about from all the, the negativity is hurting us. And we need some help to get the good word out. Uh, the Admiral told us the other day that his mother used to tell him that the truth always stands on its own, but sometimes it takes a long time to get on its own good feet. So we need some help to get on those good feet. Other than that, that's all I have to report on, if I have any questions, please.
Thank you, Duna, okay, Cooney?
Duna, thank you for using a mic correctly, speaking directly into it, it's lovely. My rock and roll days. But you've come a long way though, man. I mean, seriously, with everything that, and how everything started with the cleanup and how you and Victor kind of were getting the runaround by the Navy and were taking the brunt of all the stuff where it's like, hey, if you want to know, you know, ask the Navy. So thank you so much for staying with it, continuing to come out, always being here at the meetings. I'm interested, I guess I'm on this renewable, um, energy deal with IRA and all this other stuff. So can you tell me, do you have any idea what type of, um, percentage-wise maybe for naval facilities, um, is renewable energy?
Do you know, I don't know, my, my information, my personal information, when I transferred here in two thousand and ten is a little outdated. I asked that question, uh, because coming from Virginia to Hawaii, the first thing I saw was solar panels everywhere, and it blew me away. And I asked my department head in the Navy, what kind of percentages are we getting out of this, you know, for, as far as the electricity? He gave me a number back then with seventy-five percent. Now, I don't, I don't, I don't think he even knew what he was talking about.
He was on his way out, seventy-five percent of the base is powered by solar?
I just wanted to say the good news. I, I will find out, and I'll pass that to you, and I know just the guy to ask. But speaking of, I skipped this one because of time, but I wanted to let you know that the Department of Navy has submitted a public notice of availability for a draft environmental assessment on alternate energy, right? Two land leases are coming up for clean and renewable energy projects on joint-based property. One of them's over in Salt Lake, and the other one is over where, 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 where? It's on the base, actually. One's on the base and one's over the Salt Lake area, uh, both federal property, and there's...
I'll reach out, um, offline and let the board know, thank you, that's awesome.
And anyway, there's a, there's a public comment availability up through May the twentieth, and I'll spread that information through Larry, Chair of Ray, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that Salt Lake area is over there by NAFAC.
Yes, exactly.
Okay, any other questions? NAFAC.
NAFAC, Naval Facility, I use acronyms and I apologize, Naval Facilities, uh, Public Works. The guys that fix the building, the guys that's, the guys that fix the buildings, those are the guys.
Okay, we're paying no hands, and, uh, give your partner, tell him we said hi and hurry up, recover.
I will, I will. I'm sure, I'm sure he's got his foot up and is having some medicine.
Okay, thank you much.
Thanks.
Okay, and welcome back to Chancellor Carlos Benidosa. What's that, what did I call that last one, standing?
All right, evening, uh, members of the board, um, and Duna, and those on, online. Um, I'm going to be very brief, I have a couple of quick updates. Um, Lee Word just brought in three different, different national awards, and I just want to recognize folks. So our SPED faculty member Christina Calana won an American Association for Community Colleges Dell Parnell Distinguished Faculty Award. This is the second time in a year that Lee Word brings this award. Um, we have a Lee Word student, Megan Ridley, uh, she earned the Phi Theta Kappa Award. So they have, there's two of them that are, that are, uh, given, and she won both. The Coca-Cola Scholars and the New Century Scholar Award, uh, both actually, uh, awarded in Kentucky, um, earlier this month. Um, our Kawai Mano Mano program is a professional development for our faculty and staff to embrace more Hawaiian culture, Hawaiian history and what we do for a stronger sense of place. Um, we submitted this program, uh, for the Bellwether Consortium, and so we became a finalist in that program at the national level and won Best in Show. We had to go and present that in San Antonio earlier in the year. Um, you may have heard recently, um, we opened our Wahihua Value Added Product Development Center two weeks ago. Uh, that's a nice milestone for us. Um, May fourth, we're hosting our Luulu fundraiser gala on campus. Shouldn't expect too much of a traffic jam, but it is our biggest, uh, gala event. Um, quick announcement, uh, May tenth is our commencement. So you may experience some traffic, uh, that we generate for that. Uh, so May tenth from probably four o'clock and through nine PM, there may be some congestion, uh, here on our Puulua campus. Um, and the last thing that I wanted to share, uh, with the board is that we did just receive a gift of a bus so that we could start delivering CDL passenger training. So it took us a little bit, I didn't want to go through procurement, so the gift was a definite nice, uh, gesture, and so we'll be able to stand that up over the summer. Playing poker, weren't you? Good job. So happy to answer questions if you have any.
All right, thank you, that's some great news there at the end, uh, go ahead, Eric, Rodney.
Uh, Carlos, what, what is the capacity of your guys', um, auditorium that, uh, Robert, that you had the concert series in?
Sure, so our theater can sit about six hundred and fifty.
Okay, cool.
Yeah.
Yeah, because, uh, my son plays for the, uh, Hoiwu Symphony, and they just had their, um, uh, did at, uh, Wana Looa. So I was thinking, you know, maybe, uh, Hoiwu Symphony should come down that side.
Absolutely.
It's pretty cool, yeah, so, um, also, senior truck over there at International Trucks Hawaii for the CDL training? Something going on with that international, so, but yeah, keep it up. Are you guys having a Hawaiian concert summer series going on over there?
Not, not, not a summer series, so we are having some, um, I'm going to say other entities hosting events at the theater. Uh, we are celebrating our fiftieth anniversary, so we're putting up a new series. So last year, we brought in quite a few shows, and so we're establishing the next season. Um, and we'll announce that relatively soon, we'll send that out through social media and all channels, um, yeah.
And are you guys opening up any, uh, new vocational, uh, training or courses out there at Lee Word?
Yeah, so, um, we are, uh, becoming a little bit more robust in the healthcare space, so medical assisting CNA, uh, because we are in dire need for that. Uh, we're actually going to the different high schools to offer those programs to high school students. Um, we're also establishing on the lower campus here in Pearl City, an ag tech facility to support agriculture. So it's actually a pretty giant shade house structure that we build in very little time, actually, so.
Do you think, um, is the one that university has out at, uh, Kahuku or, uh, actually the Kahuku Train, by the Kahuku Training Center? Is that one still in operation down there?
Not sure. I could get back to you on that one, yeah.
I mean, you know, with the goings on as of late, with, uh, self-sustainability coming into question and, uh, cattle ranching, losing their land, you know, uh, maybe the universities and the, the community college are the only ones that we can rely on to keep, uh, self-sustainability going.
So, so one of the things that I, I don't know is very public or, or common knowledge is for the community colleges, we're modeling the statewide access programs. So for example, our teacher education program, we're delivering on Kauai, and we have students on all neighbor islands as a statewide model program. Agriculture, food innovation are the spaces where Lee Word is taking the lead for statewide access. So we're building our facility, but we're going to be able to replicate statewide to offer those areas. Ag tech is one of those growth spaces where the workforce is aging out, and ag tech is a way of bringing the next generation in and making them fall in love with agriculture. And so that's, that's where we're moving.
Okay, uh, board members, any other questions? Okay, uh, no community, you're all gone.
Thank you.
Chancellor, thank you so much, and, uh, appreciate it. We got, we got Dan and, uh, we got Dan and our Vice Chair are going to be on your campus here, uh, going to the event that you guys got. Appreciate both of you taking time to go out there. But thank you so much, and we'll see you next month. Okay, moving on, Vicky, Louis, thank you for waiting so patiently for us. What's your update for Pearl City Library?
Thank you, so, um, I'll just announce that we'll be closed on May twenty-sixth and May twenty-seven, which is Sunday and Monday for Memorial Day. And my big announcement is that our children's librarian, Tara Knuckles, she is transferring to Waimea Manoa Public and School Library. So this is going to affect our storytimes and our baby rhyme time. She's going to still do one more final baby rhyme time on the first Mon, the first, sorry, the first Wednesday of May. Um, and then she will be doing cakey storytime every Thursday in the morning, uh, up until she leaves, which her last day with us will be May seventeen. Uh, we also have, of course, a ton of other programs that we offering in May, and we welcome the community to, uh, find out more about it. You can go on our website, uh, www dot libraries hawaii dot org to find out what programs we're having in May. And, um, if you want, you can come to the library and get a May calendar. Uh, and that will be the end of my report.
Thanks, Vicky.
Okay, thank you. Board members, any questions, go ahead, Dan?
Uh, briefly, uh, do you have enough digital navigators?
The program for digital navigators has been extended up until, I believe, June. Uh, they have hired new people for that service. Uh, I think it's pretty popular, and I, um, I do like that we are still continuing this, but they're only coming, I believe, the first and third Sundays of each month. So if anyone is interested in, um, learning how to navigate their technology, uh, they want to learn a little bit, something about computers, uh, we have digital navigators there. They come between eleven to three PM, first and third Sunday of each month.
Yes, and there will be lots of federal money coming from, uh, through DBAT, so do get geared up, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, see no other questions? Vicky, thank you so much, and we'll see you next month. Uh, Arlen, Ledward, Border Water Supply update? And, uh, I'll be right coming over here today with all those metal plates in Mommy Lani's streets.
Uh, thank you. Good evening, Pearl City Board members and community. Arlen Ledward for Border Water Supply. Uh, there were nine main breaks last month, um, March fifth, eight-inch break near eleven eighty-four Polikaiko Street, and an eight-inch break near five-five-eight Houmaona Street. Uh, March thirteen, eight-inch break near seventeen twenty-three Houleihua Street, and again on March thirtieth. Uh, March fourteenth, eight-inch break near fourteen thirty-one Houleihua Circle. March fifteenth, twelve-inch break near ninety-eight dash fourteen fifty-four Houohiki Street. March nineteen, eight-inch break near seven-one-five Houaumoi Street. March twenty-fifth, eight-inch break near two-three-three-six Animi Place. And March twenty-eighth, there was eight-inch break near seventeen forty-eight Houaoukupa Street. Uh, general water announcement this month, it's time to chase down and repair those pesky leaks. Border Water Supply, once again partnered with Hardware Hawaii for annual detect the leak camp, detect the leak week campaign last week. Uh, this campaign is an annual reminder to check your plumbing fixtures and irrigation systems for leaks. Uh, one of the most common leaks is a leaky toilet, which is caused by a worn-out or faulty flapper. Uh, in-person event was last week, Wednesday, uh, at Tamaran Park Bishop Square in downtown Honolulu. If you'd like to find out more water-saving tips and tricks, you can, uh, go to our website, borderwatersupply.com. The end of my report.
Okay.
Have you taken questions?
Arlen, thank you so much for the update. Board members, any questions? Seeing none, thank you much. Okay, uh, Tony Velasco is, uh, on travel. He asked me to make announcement for the Pearl City High School PTSA. Uh, the food trucks are going to be positioned on Friday, April twenty-sixth, from four to eight PM up at Pearl City High School. This is a big fundraiser for Project Grad, so I ask all the board members if you could please put that on your calendar and come on out and support them, buy plate lunch, and it'll help our graduates. Uh, also, the PC, uh, PCHS is having a craft fair at Pearl City Shopping Center on April twenty-eighth from ten to two-thirty PM. And Pearl City Community Association with President Kelsey Poa, uh, they're going to be supporting Police Week. I'll be asking board members to come out, wave signs, uh, on wherever that designated area is going to be for traffic to slow down and observe the pedestrians at crosswalks. Uh, moving on, uh, regular meeting minutes, I, I need a motion to approve February twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-four minutes, can I motion?
There are more rules.
Okay, Dan, Junior, Junior, you want a second there? Okay, Junior, second, uh, any changes? Hearing none? Okay, if, uh, if there is no objections, the meetings stand approved. Okay, and, uh, chair announcements, I just want to mention, I'm in collaboration with, uh, Mr. Sakamoto from the Kani Oi Board. Uh, I'm going to be drafting a resolution for next month to make a requirement that, that the state and the city begin, uh, uh, looking at, uh, integrating audible tones at our crosswalks that have stoplights for the disabled, uh, blind. Uh, it happens in other cities, and we need to have it in Hawaii. And then the other resolution will be, as I brought up about the insurance companies raising rates, there needs to be a cap on that, a certain percentage that they can raise. Uh, other net Pearl City Neighborhood Board meeting will be held hybrid, virtual and in person, uh, via WebEx facilitated here at Mommy Lani Community Center, uh, on Tuesday, May twenty-eighth. And, uh, our meetings are broadcast on Ollalo, channel forty-nine, on the second Saturday at six PM and the first, third Friday. If there are no objections, this meeting is adjourned, thank you.